We'll call to order this regular May 16, 2016, meeting of the Robertson County Commission. I'm going to ask Sheriff Bill Holt, if he will, to lead us in the indication to be followed by the pledge to the flag. Please stand.
Join me in prayer. O gracious heavenly Father, Lord, I come to you this evening with a heavy heart. As you're well aware, today and this week is National Law Enforcement Memorial Week. And Lord, we just pray for each one of those individuals that have followed in your footsteps and paid the supreme price as we here on earth are commanded to do. Lord, we just thank you for those people that chose this profession as a service to God and to country. Dear heavenly Father, be with those families of the survivors. Lift them up, be with them and comfort them. Be with those that are each and every one that are out there today on the streets, serving and protecting our lives. Dear heavenly Father, just thank you and keep them all in your presence. Be with these commissioners tonight as they deliberate and go about carrying on the business of this county. In Christ's name, amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioners, if you'll press yes and confirm, you will be registered into our voter system. declare that we do have a quorum. Commissioners, you have the minutes from the April meeting in your packet. What's your pleasure? Have a motion by Commissioner Baggett, second by Commissioner Roberts, that they be approved. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, so they are approved. Before I get to minutes, I'm going to do something a little out of the ordinary. I know we have a number of people that are here tonight in terms of a rezoning resolution. So I'm going to go ahead and ask at this point, if you intend to speak to the commission during the public hearing about rezoning, if you will at this time, raise your hand. If you intend to speak to the commission at this time. Okay. That's good. Commissioners, with your approval, we will go ahead and move the rezoning part of the agenda to the front. Anybody has any objections, say so now. We may be able to dispense with these matters earlier. So without seeing any objection, we will move the rezoning resolutions to the front. I'm going to ask Mr. Doug Van, our director of planning, to come to the front. In a moment, you'll be given an opportunity. I'm going to ask those of you who wish to speak to either one of these resolutions to line up here behind Mr. George in just a minute after Mr. Van has finished. Mr. Doug Van, director of planning.
The first resolution tonight is Mr. James Moore. He's requesting to rezone 1.27 acres from AG2 to R30. His property is located on Deer Creek Lane, 11th Civil District, 2nd Voting District. Planning Commission evaluated this and by a vote of nine to zero asked for your approval.
Anyone here to speak to this resolution? Seeing none, Mr. Van.
The next resolution is Mr. Daniel Richardson, representing Ms. Kaye James. His request is to rezone 7.53 acres from AG2 to C1. His property is located on Tennessee Highway 49, 13th Civil District, 11th Voting District. Planning Commission evaluated this request and by a vote of seven to two asked for your approval.
To those who wish to speak to this resolution, I'm going to ask you to form a line behind Mr. George. You will be given no more than two minutes. The chief of staff, Chief of Staff, raise your hand, is keeping stopwatch. You will be given two minutes to make your statement. So when you, I will recognize you if you'd like to come at this time and form a line behind. When you get to the podium, please state your name so that the clerk can have it on record. So is everyone who is going to speak in the process of getting in the queue at this time? Is this everyone? Everyone that's going to speak is currently in line. Mr. Norton, I think you're first, so if you'll come to the podium and state your name, you will have two minutes and Ms. Allen will keep up with the time.
Oh, I planned on more than two minutes, so I'm going to have to go fast. The main thing, oh, Mike Norton, sorry, I live in Glover Hills. I wanted to speak about the number of people that are truly against this zoning change. And in the planning commission meeting, the developer made a statement that he had a lot of the Glover Hills residents that were for the change. And he also said he didn't want to anger the Glover Hills residents. Well, I have thirty Glover Hills residents and I have two that live on Robert Prior Road that are against the rezoning. And not only do I just have their names written up here, but I also have emails from every one of them that specifically says I do not want it rezoned. So it's not smoke and mirrors, it's the real thing. These are the people that don't want it. Some of them are in the audience, some are not, but you can see by the signs how many we have representing our vote no on this rezone. And one of the emails said, "The developer, the person wanting to build a storage unit is a friend of a friend. He stopped by our house a couple of weeks ago to sell us on the idea." He told me at the time they had the support from all the Glover Hills board members. Well, I can tell you for a fact that three of the board members are truly against it and one of them is kind of neutral and one, for personal and professional reasons, can't speak up. And he also said that if he didn't get approval, it could be much worse. A pig farm or fourteen 1,000-foot houses, square foot houses could be put in there. And I don't think those are reasons not to rezon it. There were other items that came up in the meeting too that really kind of disheartened me, the fact that they wanted to, that did vote, the planning commission did vote to rezon. And one of them was the developer said they'd lived here a long time. Well, I don't think that necessarily matters when you're going to rezon. I don't think it's a valid reason for rezoning. And the planning commission also said that there was rusty equipment that used to be stored there. That still is not a valid reason. And the property had been in sale for a long time.
I'm sorry, Mr. Norton. I am sorry, your two minutes are up. I apologize.
No, that was knocking for me.
Yes, sir. Everyone, please watch the cord, it's a bit out of the way. Yes, sir.
My name is Lee Williams. Thank you for allowing me to speak to the commission. I wanted to make several points. One is that you have to be very careful in that I certainly do not support this rezoning. And I think you have to be very careful because what I'm seeing is a trend toward what is known as spot rezoning. I don't know if you're very familiar with spot rezoning, but spot rezoning basically breaks the very tenet of zoning. My wife and I came here from Nashville. We wanted to live in a beautiful rural area. We came here, we moved here, it was zoned residential, and we bought under those premises. Now, I'm not so naive, nor young, to know that there aren't good reasons to rezon. There are very valid reasons to rezon. However, I don't believe this is one of them. I also sent out a email this morning to all the commissioners. I hope you had a chance to review it, but there actually have been lawsuits in other states. I gave an exact example where there was actually a rezoning where commercial property, where residential zoning was changed to commercial zoning in front of a subdivision entrance. And I would just suggest that I believe the valuations of the homes could decrease. I think it could cost the county money and tax revenues. And I would suggest that if you, that at least, at a minimum, especially with all of our friends and neighbors here, that you consider this very seriously in the sense of, I would certainly do study. I would do further study to find out, will the valuation of the property go down? We all can have an opinion, but we need to get someone independently who will find out what that is. I would only say this, and for the purchaser of the property, and I don't know this individual, I'm sure they're a very fine people, I would only say, I can really relate to the fact that you say, "Well, I bought my property, I should be able to, what, do what I want to do with it."
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Williams.
Yes, ma'am.
Board of Commissioners, my name is Kristi Gilbreath. I live in Glover Hills as well. I attended a meeting two weeks ago in which part of discussing the proposed property was a lot of talk about having a history here in Glover Hills, over a hundred years' worth of history, not wanting to bring anything negative to the community. Unfortunately, I don't have that history. What I do have is fact. And the fact is simply that with this type of facility being proposed, you put all of us who live within the proximity of this building at a potential public risk. Self-storage does not monitor what is going in it. Therefore, it leaves opportunities for hazardous situations to occur, whether it's hazardous materials, potential drug operations such as meth labs. I'd like to quote a statistic from the Department of Justice, specifically the Drug Enforcement Administration. Thirty-eight percent of seized clandestine methamphetamine labs were found in storage facilities. This is not something that I want to see in my neighborhood. It's not something that I want to see my kids exposed to, my neighbors' children exposed to. Fact, safety. The facility will expose residential areas to the traffic that it would be bringing in, thereby creating a potential security risk for all of us who live here. Again, that's not something that can be argued. Mr. Corey Richardson brought up a couple of things when he spoke and eloquently outlined his plan for this facility, which is he had two comp valuations and one traffic study. That's wonderful, but there was no data to back that up. There was not a mention of the company, a name, a website, a phone number for any of us living in this community to follow up on that. That's fact. Fact, pollution, self-storage effects on the quality of life, headlights from vehicles, noises that include honking, reverse beeping, lift monitors, idling of engines, as well as fumes, and trash.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Rod Kirk. I've been in Robertson County for eight years and have lived in Glover Hills that entire time. There's been a lot of good points made tonight. I want to just point out to you, if you haven't looked at the map that was sent, that's what the site looks like right now. You see residential, residential, residential. And just in the sheer numbers of people that are here against this project, I think the facts show that there are more folks against this than there are for it. So what you're voting on tonight is the ability of one or two developers to profit from this project against sixty-four homeowners in Glover Hills and more surrounding Glover Hills that will likely lose value in the largest investment they will make in their lifetime, which is their homes. So I wanted to point that out because that visual is important of what that zoning looks like. I also want to talk a little bit about Robert Prior Road. My understanding, and unfortunately I was out of town for the planning commission, but that Robert Prior would be the ingress and egress access for this project. I would like to know if studies have been done on whether Robert Prior Road is a viable commercial access road. There is going to be twenty-plus RV parking lots in this storage facility. RVs can go from 4,000 to 30,000 pounds. There might be boat storage in this facility. So if there hasn't been a study on whether Robert Prior can handle that commercial traffic, there needs to be. And then the last point I wanted to make is, I've spent the last ten years economic development, two of those here in Robertson County. There's a lot of things that go into business recruitment. One is quality of life. One is education. One is access to amenities. One is executive-level neighborhoods. I've heard time and time again that too many of our management teams, executive-level employees that work in the county, don't live in the county. One of those reasons is we do not have a lot of executive-level neighborhoods to choose from. And one of the handful that we do have, which is Glover Hills, you are now voting potentially to put a storage unit across from that. That will be another deciding factor on whether management and executive-level employees that work in this county decide to live in this county. Thank you.
My name is Steve Prior. Commissioners, thank you. I live on Robert Prior Road. I saw the plat, Mr. Richardson is brought, and I'm going to be honest with you, personally, I don't have a problem with it because I'd a whole lot rather see that in my backyard than I head to wherever fifteen houses that ain't big as a Cracker Box.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name's Ashley Bianchi. I first want to start off saying, this rezoning debate is not personal against the Richardsons, the sellers, their friends, or their family members. In my opinion, this is about saving land from rezoning commercial in a rural, residential, and quiet area. I am a newer resident to Robertson County area and Glover Hills subdivision. I've only lived in Robertson County for four years and I never would have dreamed that I would be working and raising a family out in the country. I might sound country, but I am a city girl. I was born and raised in Hendersonville in Sumner County and moved to Murfreesboro to attend college where red lights are at every block and traffic goes literally for miles. I saw farms bought up, highways laid down, four lanes built, family farms gone to strip malls, liquor stores put up, and now vapor cigarettes outlets by the dozens. I say all of this for the fact that I love the country more. I love that our neighborhood and highway has no traffic lights every block, no long waits pulling out, no strip malls to stare at, and I had forgotten what stars even look like in the sky. A storage facility is not my issue with this process. I hope the Richardsons find a great piece of commercial property to build their storage facility on, but I don't think this is the proper area for it. With all the homes around it and the neighborhood that is trying to grow and prosper directly across the street, Glover Hills subdivision is one in a handful of neighborhoods in Robertson County that are not cookie-cutter homes on quarter-acre lots. It is an appealing subdivision for all people of any profession. If that land goes commercial, anything can be put there. Maybe a storage facility for now, but could be torn down for a Walgreens or a Rite Aid at any time. What financial impact could that bring to Glover Hills subdivision? Right now, let's say roughly sixty-seven houses paying $1,900 a year in taxes. That comes out to around $127,000 a year.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
My name is Roy Dittmore. I am a resident of Glover Hills for almost eleven years now. Commissioners, thank you. My question is, has an environmental study been done? I went by and looked at the property this weekend. Everything funnels downhill to one point, which is immediately adjacent to the retention pond in Glover Hills. Now, if they're putting RVs, boats, everything's going to flood down through there. There ain't no telling what will come down through there. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
My name is William Kroger. I'm an attorney here in town. I've been, I've had an office here for about twenty years. I live in Glover Hills. I've lived there for around ten years. Somebody mentioned earlier the issue of spot zoning. I believe that that's been defined as a parcel of land within the limits of a use district and march it off into a separate district for the benefit of the owner. So for that, one owner's private gain. I think that that's what this is. This is a situation in which I think that the owner of this area that would be deemed commercial would be used for his gain to the detriment of all the families that you've seen coming forward, sitting out here tonight. As another individual said here, your home for most Americans is the number-one investment that you'll ever make. That's what you want to do. You want to have that available to you. You don't want it depreciated in any way. And I would submit that allowing this area to be declared a commercial area would do that. And if you don't know for sure, then that should be a reason to vote no. If you don't know, then that's an excellent reason to say no. I would urge you to vote no to this proposition.
Thank you. My name's Corey Richardson. I am the developer, me and my wife, Marissa. I don't know where I can lay these plans out if I really have time to look at the plans. I've designed this storage facility with the best buildings you can buy, a barrier down 49 and around Prior Road, landscape buffers. I've done a traffic study. Mr. Don Williams that owns A+ here in town, over a sixty-day period at his facility, there was 2.4 cars in, in and out of day. I've been in the community myself for forty-three years, because I'm forty-three years old. My family goes back over 200 years in that community. And the last thing I wanted to do was make anybody mad doing this. That was not my intentions, and I'm not going to apologize for trying to better myself or my family. Like I said, the lighting, I've addressed the lighting with wall pack lightings, hoods on that shine directly on the ground. The property that's, the closest commercial property is 1,150 foot from my corner to the A-style beauty salon down the road, which was rezoned a few months ago. This first phase that I'm going to do is going to cost me about $500,000 to do, and in the end, I'm going to have close to a million dollars spent on this piece of property. There's not going to be any jump. I've got buildings proposed, but there's nothing to say that there's going to be boat storage. There's not going to be any outside storage at all. If there was boat and motorhomes, it will be in a covered canopy building. And that was just a proposed building that I put in there just in case down the road that came up. I didn't want that to be an issue. I know y'all have a hard job, do your commission, and this is the first time that I've had to do this, and it's probably been the hardest thing I've had to do. So I respect your vote and, you know, it's nothing personal to any homeowners.
My name's Larry Richardson. I'm Corey's father. We have lived in the community for a long time, and I do think that makes a difference.
Ladies, speak, ladies.
We do not respond. Mr. Richardson, you have the floor.
I've came up and down that road many, many times. When I went, grew up out there, everything, there was no houses in Glover Hills. There was nothing, a few houses between Cooper Town and Springfield. So y'all are the ones that started, which it's a good subdivision. I've been involved with it a long time. But just to say that y'all are the only white, white-collar people in Robertson County, that's wrong. But anyway, I know most of you, y'all got a hard job. We appreciate anything you can do.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Linda Boyd. If you answered your phone Saturday or Sunday, either my husband or I once spoke to you on the phone. My father was from Barron Plains. I remember Springfield when it was a Dairy Queen and Vernon's Restaurant, and I've watched it grow. I also have looked at the data, and it appears we're expecting about 20,000 new residents between now and the year 2025. The type of residents that we draw to this area is up to you and the planning commission, and it's up to what we offer. My family has invested in Glover Hills. My daughter has moved to Springfield since we have. She's my next-door neighbor. And my mother has located herself in Springfield. I have a 45-minute commute every day so I can come home to a quiet area that's residential and agricultural. That's the draw that Robertson County offers. That's what we look for. People aren't, positive economic growth is built on taxpayers. Either we attract people that can support our community, or we attract people that our community needs to support. A storage unit is going to benefit one man and his family, and it's going to take away from families that have invested in your community. You control the development. I would ask you to vote no on the rezoning.
I wasn't planning on getting up here, but my name's Marissa Richardson, and I'm Corey's wife, and I am for the rezon. And I just wanted to say, when we were at the meeting two weeks ago, there was a couple of things that were said that I just don't agree with because Corey, they said that Corey spoke to several of the Glover Hill Committee. Well, no, he didn't say that they were for it. He just went and he spoke to a few of them and showed them the zoning map and explained what he wanted to do. He was trying to be fair because he didn't want anyone to be, I don't know what I'm trying to say, but here I'm nervous, but that didn't want it to affect anyone. And I think he was being fair to come and talk to several. I also have names, and several thirty people too, and I think one of you said that we didn't come around the neighborhood talking. And I also have some names and addresses that said they weren't against it. So, and I saw a few names on your poster that I had talked to, and they said they weren't going to sign, but they weren't going to sign against either. So, you know, I just hope you vote our way. We're just trying to help our family and do, and we would never, never hurt anyone their property. We talked to two people that are, that said it would not mess their property value, would not bring their value down. So, anyway, but if y'all want to see, I have some names. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Commissioner, for the opportunity to speak. My name is John Maynard, and I live in Glover Hills. And I didn't intend to speak to all tonight, just to listen and support, but as I stood there, I can assure you just from listening, that the family that's interested in building this facility are good people. But a comment was made that it does matter, that I grew up here, been here forty years, fifty years, a hundred years, wherever that is. And I spent thirty-two years in the United States Army. And when I stood before a camera deciding where I was going to retire to, I could have picked Hendersonville. I could have picked Antioch. I could have picked anywhere around. I didn't want that. As Linda Boyd just, like you just mentioned ago, said, I picked a rural community that would be rural and that I could live in a nice neighborhood, and it's nothing against, personally against them, but it doesn't matter. When I went and voted for my commissioner recently, I didn't see anything on ballot that said, "Are you from here?" I spent thirty-two years protecting this country, United States Army, for our system so everybody's represented. And when I voted, I voted for my representative to represent me, whether I'm from here or not. I grew up in Putnam County, over near Corporal. I understand how that works. I've been where you are, not here, but I've been where you are, and I understand the pressures you have and the decisions you have to make. And I commend all of you for being willing to serve, but how long you've been here shouldn't have anything to do with the decision that's made as to whether this is approved or not.
We will close the public hearing at this time and bring the matter back to the commission for your consideration. Are there questions or comments on the part of the commissioners?
Mr. Graham.
Mr. Bowens. We will, we will. Any questions or comments before we vote separately on these two resolutions? Commissioner Eden.
How many, how many homes are in Glover Hills?
Sixty-four.
I mean, sixty-four.
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 And three phases that have not yet.
And three faces that have not yet been developed.
How many, how many is on the board of directors?
Five.
Five?
Yeah.
Are you ready to vote? Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, now, on this one, and I went and looked it up, I've gotten a lot of phone calls and stuff on this particular issue, but I looked it up. There is actually no commercial property that touches this property. Is that correct?
That is correct. The closest commercial property is 1,000 feet.
Right. It's actually surrounded by, it's not just Glover Hill. I was just looking at that. It's actually got residential on each side.
Agricultural around it, yes, sir.
Well, right, at least on the picture. I just wanted to clarify that. I know, I know further on, you've got the corner there that has the convenience market, and you have kind of what used to be a nursery and you've got, you've got the highway there. This is actually, give us all a chance.
All done. Chair will entertain a motion to approve a resolution for Mr. James Moore, Civil District 11, Voting District 2. Have that by Commissioner Moore, and I need a second on that resolution. Second. Second by Commissioner Jackson. If you're in favor of resolution number one, vote yes and confirm. If you're opposed, vote no and confirm at this time. Commissioner Ellis, are you still voting? There've been 21 votes in favor, two opposed, and one absent. I declare that resolution approved. We're now, we're now back to resolution number two, for Mr. Daniel C. Richardson, Civil District 13, Voting District 11. Chair will entertain a motion for approval.
Mayor?
Yes. Commissioner Haley?
I note that we defer this to the Chief of Staff.
Is this a motion to table?
This is a motion to table.
There's a motion to table which cuts off debate. There has been a motion to table. Is there a second to table? Seconded by Commissioner Ellis. So we have a motion and a second to table. Are you, are you with me, ladies? This is a motion to table. Okay? So if you're in favor of tabling this motion, yes. Ellis? Commissioner Ellis, can you, can you second it on your device? Okay? Have a motion and a second to table which cuts off debate. If you're in favor of tabling this motion, vote yes and confirm. If you're opposed to tabling this motion, vote no and confirm at this time. There've been seven votes in favor, 16 opposed, and one absent. I declare that that resolution has failed, so we are now back to the motion. Back to the motion. To a motion for approval. Motion for approval by Commissioner Roberts. Now I need someone to second to get on the floor, and we have a second by Commissioner Stacy Moore. Any discussion? Everybody ready to vote? Seeing no objection to questions being put, if you're in favor of this resolution, vote yes and confirm. If you're opposed, vote no and confirm at this time. There've been 10 votes in favor, 12 opposed, and one absent. I declare that resolution has failed. Chair is going to call a two-minute, a two-minute recess. And visitation with the family will be at Springfield Funeral Home Wednesday from 3:00 to 8:00. There'll be a Masonic service at 7:00, and then the funeral will be Thursday at 1:00. So Commissioner Baggett, on behalf of the entire commission, our most sincere condolences. Donna and you and all of your family will certainly be in our prayers. I'm going to ask at this time if Mr. and Mrs. Redfern and Ms. Candace will come up and join me up front here. As I think everyone in Robertson County knows, the name Redfern is synonymous with logging. And they have been a tradition in Robertson County for generations. It's always good when people outside the county recognize the achievements of what those of us that are, that are our own, and we, and that we claim our own and love as our own have done. As some of you may, may know about this distinction, but let me read this proclamation. Whereas the Redfern family of Cedar Hill is the Tennessee Forest Association's 2015 Master Lager of the Year. Whereas four generations of Redfern's have exemplified being good stewards of the land, upholding exceptional water quality standards and harvest site. And whereas Michael and Tina and their sons, Justin and Jonathan, continue to maintain the highest standards of their family's logging tradition. And whereas the Redfern name is respected statewide for the family's logging history, working well with landowners in northern middle Tennessee. And whereas Michael and his sons have had a great reputation for their work in the woods, their dedication to the community, and for their commitment to church and family. And whereas the Redfern family intends to continue its dedication of excellence to future generations. So therefore, I, Howard Bradley, as Robertson County Mayor, do proclaim tomorrow, May 17, 2016, as Redfern Family Day in Robertson County, and I urge all my citizens to congratulate the family for being named the 2015 Master Lagers of the Year. To be recognized by a state organization like this, one that is so important in the state's overall agricultural economy, is a great accomplishment for the Redfern's, and we like to take pride in what they've done. So on behalf of Robertson County, congratulations.
Thank you. All right. I thank y'all. And I thank the Forest Association for nominating us for this, and we'll never do nothing to dishonor that, I assure you. And I also thank the landowners. Because without the landowners, we don't have a job. And I've worked on something y'all folks over here, but I truly thank you for this.
Now, I've got a question before you walk out. Now, what do you call that, where you stand on the law and walk?
Falling in if I try.
I'm going to ask Ashley Gash and her mother if she will come up and join us at this time. Mr. Davis, come join us, too, please. As some of you know, this is Ashley Gash. Ashley is a 7th grader at Springfield Middle School. And I don't think, in all my years here, I've ever had a chance to recognize a national champion, Mr. Davis. I don't know that we've had a national champion in any category in Robertson County before. So, you know, it's taken us a long time to get on the national stage. We had Joe Burns, we had Jesse Holman-Jones, and now we have Ashley Gash. So we're so proud of what you've done. So let me read this proclamation. Whereas the Springfield Middle School scholar, Ashley Gash, is the Daughters of American Revolution National Essay winner in the 7th grade division. And whereas she has competed against students from public, private, parochial schools across the country. And whereas her essay was an imaginative take on a colonial girl's perspective of the Stamp Act of 1765 and its adverse effects on her family, friends, and neighbors. And whereas Ashley's impressive essay was judged for not only historical accuracy, spelling, grammar, and originality. And whereas Ashley's essay took top honors in the county, state, and regional contests, and finally the national contest. And whereas Ashley will travel to Washington this summer to be honored and receive a certificate, medal, and monetary reward. I therefore, Howard Bradley, as Mayor of Robertson County, proclaim Wednesday, May 18, 2016, as Ashley Gash Day in Robertson County, and I urge all citizens to congratulate Ashley on her remarkable achievement. Ashley, I greet you, as Walt Whitman said, at the beginning of a great career. Send us back a picture from Washington. I think we're now ready for reports. And the first report the chair has is 7.1 from the Highway Department. Don't see Mr. Hester in the audience, as he usually is. 7.2 is from Animal Control. 7.3 is from the trustee. Trustee also include, included in your report, the 2015 delinquent personal property list. 7.4 is from EMA. 7.5 is the Veteran Service Officer's Report. And this is a good time to remind folks that Memorial Day is coming up in a couple of weeks. We'll be at Greenbrier at 9:00 a.m. We'll be at Springfield's Memorial, Robertson County's Memorial Gardens at 10:00. Hopefully you can join us for one of those, and there'll also be a ceremony at noon at White House at the Civic Center. 7.7 is the Planning Commission. 7.8 is from the Fire Service. 7.9 is from Solid Waste. 7.10 is the Inmate Expense Report. 7.11 is the Financial Report. Those are the reports that the chair has. What's your pleasure? Do they be accepted nor filed by Commissioner Couch? Seconded by Commissioner Roberts? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no, so they are approved. I'm going to...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Hogan?
The report on the delinquent taxes at my living center there, is it not, was it not last month, so, instead of this month? I just wanted to make sure.
Well, it's dated May 2nd.
It was last.
It was last.
It was last month.
Right. I just, you said it was this month.
The Chief of Staff says it's a separate report.
Yeah, we got that report last month.
But she says this is a separate report. This report is dated May 2nd. Okay. Did you hear that, Commissioner Hogan? So, recognize now Commissioner Vogel, who's chairman of the nominating committee with elections and appointments, and we have two appointments to make at this time.
Mr. Chairman, Madam Clerk, fellow commissioners, citizens of Robertson County. As the chairman said, we've got two committees that's coming up tonight, and if I can get a second, I'll explain.
Have a motion and a second by Commissioner Ellis.
Okay. On the Equations Board, which is a two-year term, Richard Lee will be replacing Jeff Bradley. You want to do this separate, Mr. Bradley?
No, no reason to.
On the Economic Development Board, it's till 2018, Caleb Fuquay is replacing Don Heidt. This was unanimous from the nomination committee.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no, so they are elected. Under new resolutions, we recognize Commissioner Hoover, who is chairman of the Budget Committee for the first 10, it appears. Commissioner Hoover?
Madam Clerk, fellow commissioners, ladies and gentlemen of the audience, I have resolution 051616027. This is for the Sheriff's Department. If I can get a second?
Have a motion and a second by Commissioner Stacy Moore.
This is to cover inmate medical, coming from contracted prisoner boarding.
Any discussion?
250,000.
Budgeting for that amount is always a perilous situation, Commissioner Ellis, because it's, it's just nobody predicted.
No, it's a balance.
It is a balanced amendment. Any other questions? Questions have been called for. If you're in favor of this resolution, vote yes and confirm. If you're opposed, vote no and confirm at this time. 23 votes in favor, none opposed, one absent. I declare that resolution approved. Commissioner Hoover?
Next resolution is 051616028. This is for the Sanitation Department. If I can get a second?
And a second by Commissioner Eden?
This is to cover the tip fee. Of course, you know, we had to, they went up $7 because of Bye County, and this is to make up the difference.
This also is a balanced amendment. Any discussion? Questions been called for. If you're in favor of this resolution, vote yes and confirm. If you're opposed, vote no and confirm at this time.
It went from 45, 50...
To 51.
To 51.
So that would be six...
Actually, 550. Right.
Yeah. 45, 50 to 51.
They went up to $7 on us. Little, little different there, so.
But that makes up the shortfall. Commissioner Eden?
This is my, Commissioner Darce. This is specifically to make up the shortfall to get us to July 1st.
It'll also be reflected in the coming budget as well. Commissioner Hogan?
Is not, it go $6 and not 7, was that, was that correct? $6 and not 7 there?
I stand corrected. Thank you.
Ready to vote?
Yes, sir.
If you're in favor of this resolution, vote yes and confirm. If you're opposed, vote no and confirm at this time. 23 votes in favor, none opposed, and one absent. I declare that resolution approved. Commissioner Hoover?
Resolution number 051616029. This is for the Senior Citizen Center. This is a balanced budget amendment. If I can get a second?
And a second by Commissioner Hogan?
I'm going to let the...
Uh, this is what we're speaking with the city as far as the...
I think this is for the full, is that right?
Yeah. Uh, this was, this is money for linoleum and some build-up in the floor where the meals on wheels are being served. It was going to cost about $2,700 in that neighborhood. City of Springfield has agreed to pay half, and you have been asked to pay half, and hopefully that'll be a much better situation for where those meals are sold from. It's a situation that has needed doing for years. Question been called for. If you're in favor of this resolution, vote yes and confirm. If you're opposed, vote no and confirm at this time. There've been 23 votes in favor, none opposed, and one absent. I declare that resolution approved. Commissioner?
This is 051616030. This is for EMS. If I can get a second?
And a second by Commissioner Jackson.
This is a balanced budget amendment, and this has to do with, he added an extra shift, take off some, instead of using part-time help, he put on an extra shift.
Ready to vote?
Questions?
Questions been called for. If you're in favor of this resolution, vote yes and confirm. If you're opposed, vote no and confirm at this time. There've been 23 votes in favor and none opposed, and one absent. I declare that resolution approved. Commissioner?
Resolution number 051616031. This is for the courts, Chancery Courts. If I can get a second?
Seconded by Commissioner Strout.
So this is for a recording device on the sound system they currently have. They've run into an issue there, and it's being split by the Circuit Court and Chancery
They ran into an issue there, and it's being split, split by the Circuit Court and Chancery Court. This is a balanced budget amendment.
Question been called for. If you're in favor of this resolution, vote yes and confirm. If you oppose, vote no and confirm at this time. Been twenty-three votes in favor, none opposed, and one absent. I declare that resolution approved.
I have resolution number zero five one six one six zero three two. This is for the Clerk's office. If I can get a second?
And a second by Commissioner Jackson.
This is a balanced budget amendment. This is for paper and various supplies.
Question's been called for. If you're in favor of this resolution, vote yes and confirm. If you oppose, vote no and confirm at this time. There've been twenty-three votes in favor, none opposed, and one absent. I declare that resolution approved.
I have resolution number zero five one six one six zero three three. This is for the juvenile, uh, program.
Juvenile court, if I can get a second?
And this is the first reading on this amendment. And a second by Commissioner Stacy Moore.
This is to House. Um, we had, uh, one juvenile that's been in the Rutherford County Juvenile Detention Center for quite some time, and I think it's a hundred seventy-five dollars a day to, to keep him there. So, um, not enough money in the budget to, to cover this.
Question been called for. If you're in favor of this resolution, vote yes and confirm. If you oppose, vote no and confirm at this time. Been twenty-three votes in favor, none opposed, and one absent. I declare that resolution approved.
I have resolution number zero five one six one six zero three four. This is for the school system, if I can get a second?
Motion and a second by Commissioner Farmer.
This is just general housekeeping moving, uh, lunch, uh, some money from, from one side to the other. Looks like it's coming from the, uh, lunch program and going to cover some others.
If you're in favor of this resolution, vote yes and confirm. If you oppose, vote no and confirm at this time. Been twenty-three votes in favor, none opposed, and one absent. I declare that's, that approved.
I have re, resolution zero five one six one six zero three five. Um, this is, um, for autopsies, if I can get a second?
And a second by, uh, Commissioner Glover. Any discussion? Questions been called for. If you're in favor of this resolution, vote yes and confirm. If you oppose, vote no and confirm at this time. Been twenty-three votes in favor, none opposed, and one absent. I declare that resolution approved.
I have resolution zero five one six one six zero three six. This is to declare surplus property for Animal Control, if I can get a second?
Have a motion and a second by Commissioner Stroud. Any discussion? Questions been called for. If you're in favor of this resolution, vote yes and confirm. If you oppose, vote no and confirm at this time. Thank you, Commissioner Hoover. I'm going to recognize now Commissioner Couch for, from the Law Enforcement Committee for Approval and Inmate Medical Payment Plan.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Clerk, fellow commissioners, honored guests, I'd like to present to you Resolution zero five one six one six zero three seven. This is a resolution to approve an inmate medical payment plan.
Have a motion, is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Haley. Any discussion? Questions been called for. Seeing no objection to questions being put, if you're in favor of this resolution, vote yes and confirm. If you oppose, vote no and confirm at this time. Recognize Commissioner Bowens for, uh, updated OSHA resolution. We are scheduled to do this about every five years. We're a little late on this, but still not quite six years, so, Commissioner Bowens.
Hey, Bradley. County Clerk, County Commissioner, ladies and gentlemen. I bring to you Resolution zero five one six one six oh three eight. I move for adoption.
Have a motion, is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Glover. Any discussion?
This is a occupation health safety program, and we know that Mr. Ariel Douglas, he's the one over the plan, everything like that. I hope you read it and see what it, on it and everything like that.
Any discussion? If you're in favor of this resolution, vote yes and confirm. If you oppose, vote no and confirm at this time. There've been twenty-three votes in favor, none opposed, and one absent. I declare that resolution approved. Recognize now Commissioner Vogel for the second reading for the budget amendment for fiscal year June thirty-two thousand sixteen from Building and Grounds. Second reading.
Mr. Chairman, Madam Clerks, fellow commissioners, citizens of Robertson County. As Mr. Chairman said, this is the second reading of Resolution four eighteen one sixty twenty-three. It comes from Building and Grounds, but probably has something to do with the Board of Education. We're paying the bills on the old education office so we can sell that thing or move on. Need a second?
Have a second. Seconded by Commissioner Mo, uh, Bill Moore, Stacy Moore, sorry. Any discussion? Question called for. If you're in favor of this resolution, vote yes and confirm. If you oppose, vote no and confirm at this time. Been twenty-three votes in favor and none opposed, and one absent. I declare that resolution approved. And recognize Commissioner Wilson, who is chairman of Solid Waste for a second reading on a budget amendment for the Sanitation Department. Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Mayor, fellow commissioners, madam clerk, people of the audience. I bring to you Resolution Amendment to Budget of Robertson County, Tennessee for the fiscal year ending June thirty-two thousand sixteen. Resolution number oh four one eight one six oh two four. This is, this is second reading. We discussed it last month, what was twenty-six thousand dollars for the dog. If I can get a second on that?
Have a motion and a second. Seconded by Commissioner Jackson. Ready to vote? If you're in favor of this resolution, vote yes and confirm. If you oppose, vote no and confirm at this time. Been twenty-three votes in favor, none opposed, and one absent. I declare that resolution approved. Any old business to come before this body? Is it from the Sheriff's Office, Commissioner, that'll come on a new business? Uh, while we're on old business, I do want to thank Commissioner Haley for chairing the April meeting. And I reviewed the tape closely, and he did a great job, and you all did a great job, so, uh, I can be gone again. So, well done, Steve. Thank you for, thank you for your contentious work. Had a good, good trip to Washington and, uh, excellent visits with Senator Alexander and Corker, as well as Congressman Cooper. And, uh, so we had, we had, we had a good visit. If, uh, under new business, I'm going to recognize Commissioner Couch, who has a resolution from the Sheriff's Office in regards to surplus property.
This is, uh, Resolution zero five one six one zero six zero three nine. It's a resolution to declare surplus property of eleven cars, I believe, that he wants to put on, up for sale.
Have a motion, is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Jackson. Any discussion? Questions been called for. If you're in favor of this resolution, vote yes and confirm. If you oppose, vote no and confirm at this time. Been twenty-three votes in favor and none opposed, and one absent. I declare that resolution approved. Anything else under new business? I recognize Commissioner Bowens for the election of notaries. Have a motion and a second. Seconded by Commissioner Doris. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. The chair would entertain a motion to adjourn, which I have by Commissioner Vogel and seconded by Commissioner Doris. All those in favor say aye. We stand adjourned, thank you.